Good evening, everybody. We are going back into regular session. We are just upstairs talking to our lawyer about some issues. So next item on our agenda are statements from the audience. And we have Mark from the Kiwanis.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mark Harris. I'm president of the new Kiwanis of the Heights Club. And I just want to give you a status report as to where we're at. I've had meetings with the high school and with the middle school. We are set to go. And we forecast chartering will take place near the end of May. That means the membership will be created. Elections will take place. Advisors will be selected so that when we hit fall semester 2018, we hit the go button for those clubs. To meet with the PTA, the executive PTA of the middle schools on April 2nd. I'm trying to coordinate a time to meet with the PTA for the high school. That will take place around the same time. I believe that the schools will be doing some sort of presentation in early May and then more formulate that and formalize that toward the middle of May. We're working on fundraising now, right now, to be able to make sure we can afford all of this. Hate that money gets in the way. We are working on a big event. We're going to be sponsoring, well, we're going to have a bag sponsorship program for Earth Day. And what that entails is we'll go to the public and we'll say, "For $25, you'll sponsor a bag." And then we'll find someone to man that bag and do area cleanup, mostly in the parks. Some other areas is designated by the cities themselves. And take those monies and put those toward full development and chartering fees and all of that for the various clubs. So that's really all I have for you right now. I don't know if you have any questions for me as to what we're doing and what our mission is?
So at one point, you're looking for donations. Is there a way that you can maybe send that information to me and I can get it to the other members of the board?
The easiest way is we have a website,
Kiwanis of the Heights, okay.
And on there is a section to donate. So for each event, we will have a separate page or part of a page. And you'll be able to specify a donation for that event. Or if you just want to donate out of generosity, we always love that, there's a general donation button.
Okay.
Okay? So I'm off to opioid and try to spread the word there. Thank you very much, and I'll be back next month.
Good. Thank you very much. Karen Rigo.
Hello there. Thank you, Dr. Dixon and members of the board and Mr. Gaynor for letting me speak here at your meeting tonight. And I just wanted to say that I noticed in your agenda that you have a school safety resolution. So I'm here to speak on behalf of the Cleveland Heights Teachers Union. I forgot to say my name. It's Karen Rigo. And I am the first vice president of Cleveland Heights Teachers Union. And unfortunately, I'm here to say that over the last 19 years, we have witnessed countless school shootings and tragedies throughout our country. The slaughter of 17 lives in Florida in February of 2018 was different because of the public outrage shown by student activists toward the inability of elected officials to reduce the carnage. The students in our district and at the middle school and high schools are interested in making their voices and concerns heard regarding this national debate. The union leadership chose to endorse and support student actions for March 14th and April 20th, two dates that commemorate school shootings. Student protests, walkouts, or other actions that are initiated, led, and organized by students can have a powerful impact. We encourage students to work together with administrators and teacher advisors to shape meaningful and safe actions that express outrage at the inhumanity and waste of potential that occurs when gun violence in schools occurs. For our members, supporting students may be as advisors to ensure that meaning is not lost on anyone. If students walk out of schools in action, then we can support them by treating the absence as excused. If all students in a class are protesting, then the teacher may consider joining them to be part of the event. It also means that we should not be recruiting students to participate in any action, nor leading our classes to walk out. In fact, it is important that students not interested in being part of the action have their choice represented and are supervised. At this point, administrators at both the high schools and middle schools are advising student groups on options for meaningful actions. We are hopeful that students will make wise choices, seek guidance when needed, and ensure that their actions speak to the issues of gun violence in schools. At this point, we have not been informed of any actions at the elementary school for March 14th. But we may have suggestions for the April 20th date, which the day that the American Federation of Teachers has designated a call of a day for action. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Karen, you must have peeked on the agenda because that is something we are talking about and we have a resolution that our lawyers have looked at. We talked about this a little bit earlier in our last meeting. So we're gonna hopefully fulfill that and vote on that tonight. So we have Derek. And there's two other folks. Are you all together or are you individual?
Oh, we're individual.
Individual, okay. Derek.
Good evening, everyone. So as you probably remember, a couple of weeks ago, I was here with a couple of eighth graders. Hi there, Cecilia. And we did say that we were going to have a walkout, two walkouts actually, April 20th, March 14th, to protest the congressional inaction. And I'm just here to present kind of a status update, if you will, on how our actions have been going. School administration has agreed over at Heights Middle School. They've agreed to support our actions. And we've been having a great time working with Mr. McNichols and Dr. Johnston, the two principals over there, to ensure that our protests, you know, are safe and efficient and everything. And, you know, everything's coming together well. And we're all working together. And it's really been a good experience, you know, working with them on this. We have also, there was quite a bit of compromise within it. We, there was quite a bit of negotiation and discussion between school administration and our student group involving an actual walkout. We were planning to do the walkout on the front lawn, as you may have known. Eventually, that was changed to a sit-in. And then we negotiated to have it hopefully moved. We are still in negotiation with the principals as of this time to have it moved to the backfield on the opposite side of the building, behind the mods, for safety concerns. But as of now, we will still be staging a walkout. We have support from the board, the superintendent, the teachers' union, and the school administration. We're planning a full-on, you know, we're planning to completely go ahead with this as it is a very major issue, you know, it is a big issue. And we are determined to do it. I know a few other students are here to speak about it. So I won't take any more time. I just wanted to let everyone know how it's going. And I encourage you all to endorse our actions and maybe even be there on March 14th. We will also have specifics for the April 20th march to be determined. And when that happens, we will be in contact with the board and school administration about that. Thank you.
So I'm having a hard time reading this next person. I think it's Ryan Moss? Did I get that right? Perfect.
Hello, members of the board and community. I'm here to support the actions of my peers that are taking, my peers are taking by protesting for the lives lost to gun violence. I will take part in these protests. I support walking out instead of sitting in for the bigger impact it will have and to show our support with other marches nationwide. Thank you.
Cecilia or Celia? Which one is it? Because I'm...
So I am also going to discuss the walkout for gun control. I understand their concerns for safety and why they want us to do it in the lunchroom because there was a very rough time, March 1st. And that made me worried and made everyone worried. But I think everyone here is willing to push back the time so that they can set up like perimeter around where we're gonna walk out with security so they feel more safe. But I don't think a sit-in in the cafeteria will do what we want. I think the only real action will happen if we walk outside. We can do it in the back, front. I think we just need to go outside and just have 17 minutes of protest, silence, speeches, or whatever, just to protest and make our words known that we need more control in our nation.
So I think it's fabulous you guys are using your voices. And you're working with everybody here at the district level to make sure that this is peaceful and organized. And I think you could all tell what a burnt piece of Pop-Tart in the chaos that can... It's not a joke. There's some issues last week regarding that, some huge issues. So we need to make sure that it gets done and gets done right. So nobody's talking about the Pop-Tart. They're talking about your issue. So thank you. Yes, so we have, that's supposed to happen. So one of the things that we are real excited about as our board is we are able to, with our consent agenda, do more things with awards and recognitions and special things by getting more students involved. So Dr. Dixon, you wanna explain what's gonna go on for the next couple of board meetings and how this is gonna work and...
Good evening, everyone. So before we begin our awards and recognitions, I would like to welcome our new Heights High School liaison. So do we have Devon Bootnay? Will Devon come on up? And Caroline? Stand right here, ready? So we're starting a new board meeting tradition by having these students report on the latest news from Heights High. So every board member, a board meeting, they will come up and inform the board on what's happening at the high school. So we look forward to hearing both of you. This is a, you know, a two-year commitment, right? Okay. So and they're working with Joy Henderson at the high school in the communications department. And so I know you're doing double duty tonight. But we're excited to hear about this. One of our board members suggested this for us. And we thought it was a great idea. And we're looking forward to both of you. Ready? Okay. So I turn it over to you and then I'll come back up.
Hello, everybody. I'd like to first introduce myself a little bit. My name's Caroline Imka. I was expecting the event to be a little more formal, as you may see. Hi. I'm a sophomore at Cleveland Heights High School. I've been in the district my whole life. Both of my parents are Heights grads. I'm heavily involved with the music program. Hint, hint. That's why I'm here tonight. So recently, on March 1st, we had a guest speaker come in and talk to some students at the high school and then some parents and staff after school. His name was... Calvin Terrell. And he talked all about respect. The suffix re means again. And the root word spect means to see or to look at. So by definition, respect means to look again. He talked all about why respect is important and why does it matter. He also mentioned that people are really quick to point fingers, but they never really take the time to reexamine the three fingers pointed back at them. Also, the Heights IMD, the instrumental music department, just took their annual tour to Philadelphia where they got the chance to play with Heights grad and alum, grad and alum. And he played the baritone saxophone at Heights. He graduated in 2006, and he is Jason Kelsey. So that was great for the kids to get to play with him. That was really cool for them. Thank you.
My name is Devon Benet. 11th grader at Heights. Thank you. Heights wrestler, MCN member, a whole lot of other stuff. I would like to thank Ms. Dixon.
Dr. Dixon?
Dr. Dixon, for giving me this opportunity to come here and speak to y'all. There were two meetings that happened. One just happened, the last meeting that we had, and it was kind of the final meeting, was yesterday. And we talked about how we should go about the walkout that's gonna happen on March 14th. And what we've, there were many ideas. And we kind of argued about a whole lot of things. But it was construction, constructional. But what we came with was that we should all go to the Heights football field and we should stand. And they were gonna read off the names and have bells for all of the victims. And yeah, I was there for that. And students met for the IMAP meeting. It was mostly for underclassmen. But there were upperclassmen that helped them and tried to give them motivation to take more AP classes and how AP works. Because when people hear AP, they get afraid. And they think that they're just gonna fail the class. But that's not really the case. And tomorrow, 11th graders and I think some 12th graders will be taking the SAT. And there was a SAT prep class that happened two weeks ago. And it was, it was real nice. I just hated the fact that we sat in the classroom for six hours straight. But it helped a lot. And I hope that my class does very good on their SAT coming up. And thank you.
So thank you both. I know you was a little nervous, but you get used to it because you'll be coming every month. And Caroline made a tele, but I think I asked you at a meeting that she was, she used to babysit at every meeting that we, the PTA meeting. She would be the babysitter. And so I kind of cornered her and said, "I got a great job for you." And she found joy and next day, you're on. So excited for both of you. I think it's good that the district supports your growth at this level too because we know you may be sitting here as a board member, a future superintendent. And we want to be able to encourage that at this level. So thank you both, and we look forward to next month. All right? Let's give them another round of applause. So I'd like to start our recognitions tonight with some music. So if you have heard of our Heights Barbershoppers performed, you know that they are outstanding. And now that's an official title. So here with us tonight to tell us all about the students' recent accolades is vocal music director Jessie Lang. So if you come on up, Mr. Lang. All righty.
Thank you so much for inviting me and us this evening. We are here to share with you the accolades that hard work and community support help to allow our students to do what they do and do so well. This year is the third year that I was able to participate in the Barbershop Harmony Society's Midwinter Conference. And it is the first year that we're able to include both gendered ensembles, the men's barbershoppers and the women's barbershoppers. So it was a lot more work, but it was a lot more fun. And I honestly believe that it was 100% worth the extra effort that it took from myself and my team, the Vocal Arts Parent Organization, or VAPO, and the extra effort that they did to fundraise and make sure that we could make everybody who was in the ensemble made it to Los Angeles. So it was a wonderful event. And we've brought them here to share with you what we earned these very flashy and nice pins that say "Outstanding" on them because that is what we earned while we were there. So I would love to invite the board to join us on the sides of the room because otherwise you get the best heat in the house at the choir concerts where it's like... Because they really, it's a much better performance if you can see their faces. So let's first have the ladies come out and we'll share with you, we'll meet again. Gotta practice the bow. We don't normally do the bow. Okay. All right. Oh, and also, ladies, next up, we have another song to share with you. The Men's Barbershoppers also traveled with us to Los Angeles. Both of these groups represent students of every age at the high school, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors. They are, they audition and are hand-selected to participate in all of the extracurricular activities. What you're seeing before you is countless hours of rehearsal after school and preparation during their day in their curricular classes. They are all enrolled in choir. And they should be coming in as I'm speaking. They should be... Oh, come in this one. The view out of this door is comical. But aye, there they are. So students from this, from these ensembles participate in the Acappella Choir, the Heights Singers, the Men's Chorus, and the Women's Chorus. The, and like I said, they range from seniors to freshmen. We do this all year long and into the summer. So all you need to do, for more barbershop, you can look us up on YouTube if you put in Heights Barbershoppers or you can go to our website, clevelandhighschoolies.com and see pictures and video of us doing our thing. So this is the Men's Barbershoppers singing "Paper Moon." Take a bow, gentlemen. Take a bow. Like I said, we gotta work on the bow. But thank you very much for having us. We know so much more music. But we're just gonna share these two with you this evening because you can come see all of it on May 11th when all of the, these groups and all of the other ensembles, Acappella Choir, Heights Singers, Men's Chorus, Women's Chorus, Gold Rush, the pop acappella group, both of these ensembles, and all of them doing all of their music on May 11th, May 11th at 7:00 PM at Heights High School. Please join us. Thank you for having us. And thank you for your continued support.
All right, that was awesome.
That was great.
So now we have more students coming. So next, I want to invite the Heights Middle School Model UN team to be recognized for their hard work and dedication this year. So the Model UN is part of the Middle School Scholars Program at Heights Middle School. There are about 60 students from Heights Middle School who participate in Model UN. The group will be attending the Ohio Model UN Conference in Columbus this week. And back in January, they brought home quite a few awards from Cleveland, from the Cleveland Council on World Affairs Model UN Conference. So a few of them are here tonight to tell us about their experience. First, from Roxborough at Heights Middle School, we have Erin Lawson. So Erin, a come up. And then followed by Erin, we're gonna have Ilani McLean, followed by Cecilia Adams from Monticello at Heights Middle School. So in that order, you're coming up. Let's give her a hand.
Good evening, everybody, board members. My name is Erin Lawson. And I've been a member of Model United Nations since I was in sixth grade. This is my third year attending. And overall, I can say it's a pretty great experience. As you know, it's pretty much just a model of the United Nation with students taking action and learning about the world issues and writing resolutions and communicating with one another to see what we can do to change things. It's a very formal procedure as we have to write resolutions. We have to vote on them to see who, what passes and what doesn't. And we have to represent certain countries. And this also lets us learn about the different aspects of our world and see what, see different point of views from our world from different people and different nations with different... with different economies and current issues. I value the Model UN program a lot because it has taught me, it's taught me a lot, but it's also helped me harbor my writing skills, which is one thing that I'm very fond of. It's taught me how to express empathy, how to express my disapproval of certain things that are going on in the world and how, and it taught me that I do make a difference in the world, my actions do make a difference and that I have a voice, that I can say something if I see that something's wrong with our world. So overall, it's just great. That's all.
Hi, good evening and thank you, members of the board. Um, to start off, I want to say I am Ilani McLean, a student of Heights Middle School and I'm a participant of Model UN. To start off, I want to say that Model UN is a very enjoyable experience for me. I enjoy it because I get to see world issues in the perspective of other countries and communicate ideas with many other people on world problem solving. Model UN benefits me a lot and I highly suggest other students participate in Model UN as it can help with many skills such as public speaking skills, knowledge on world history and writing skills. I think discussing global issues is very important along with our youth discussing them and discussing possible resolutions for these problems. Thank you.
Hi again. I'd like to say that I really love Model UN. I've gone for three years now and I'm running for officer so that I can go for another fourth year. Um, I've heard horror stories from my brothers who've also done it and most of them are true, but that's one of the best parts. Um, it's a lot of hard work, but it has shown me what I want to be when I grow up and I do want to get into politics and I'm sure my mom will love that. Example of the hard work is that I just came from spending about four to three, three to four hours at the middle school finishing up our costumes. So my feet hurt from walking to Walmart to get ribbon that we may or may not have ran out of. My, I'm tired and I never want to see a sewing machine again, but I don't think I could ever get a better experience than going to Model UN. So I would highly recommend anyone who's able to do it or able to just go to the awards. I've never won one, but I still want to go, so I love it.
Rivia, if you would come back up, please. Ilani, Erin and Cecilia, if you can come back up, please. I want all you, the three of you to stand here in the middle together so everyone can see our future world leaders. Let's give them a round of applause. That is awesome. Want to get a picture? Did you want? Oh, come on, what are other students in the audience? Just come on up. Yeah, come on up, all the Model UN students and advisors, come on up. Yes. Board, you want to take, the board members, if you come, come on, take a picture, please.
Okay.
So all our future world leaders, that is absolutely awesome. Alright, so we have yet another group of people that helps shape all the lives and the minds of our young people and that's our Tiger Team Members of the Month. So tonight, we have an opportunity once again to recognize CHUA staff members who are going above and beyond to create a culture of excellence in our district. Tonight, I wanted to honor our Tiger Members of the Month of February. Each honoree was nominated by a colleague and in many cases, multiple colleagues. We received 40 new nominations in February, bringing our total for the year to more than 250. We have several of the February honorees with us here tonight, so when I read your name, please come forward. From Heights High, we have science teacher Nicole Miller and school counselor Michael Murray. Both come up, please. From Monticello at Heights Middle School, gifted intervention specialist Deborah Frost. From Roxboro Heights Middle, we have intervention, intervention specialist Josh Goldberg. Is Josh here? From Boulevard Elementary, our principal, Dr. Mike Jenkins. From Canterbury Elementary School, we have intervention specialist Emily Hess. Is she here? From Fairfax Elementary School, intervention specialist Midora, Midorla Hamilton? Did I print?
Mindy.
Mindy, thank you, thank you, Mindy Hamilton. Heritage Professional Development School, we have early childhood program specialist Danielle V. From Noble Elementary School, fourth grade teacher Marion Stevens. Is Marion here? Oxford Elementary School, head custodian David Moss. An administrative assistant at Roxboro Elementary, she says she runs the building in anyone's absence. Linda Stephan, come on Linda. And from the Board of Education, we have confidential administrative assistant Linda Holland. Is Linda here? Okay, let's give them all a round of applause and thank you so much for what you do. If you can come forward, Mr. Posh, so we can get a picture.
So we're going to move on with our agenda. Next is the approval of our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, so this is regarding meeting minutes, personnel, educational services and business services. And we've all received this information in advance, it's on the website.
I have a question for Scott, if I may.
Oh, yeah.
I want to hear about this antenna contract. Can you tell us a little bit about what that is?
We'll have to have George come up and talk.
I'm sorry.
That's alright.
Thank you, George.
It's okay. Uh, the antenna agreement is with the City of Cleveland Water Department. They were requesting a cell site to, you know, they went to the meter reading where they can walk by homes now. So this antenna allows them to get a better signal within Cleveland Heights area. What we did is we came to an agreement, we, this has been vetted through our attorney. Uh, we're receiving 400 and some dollars a month for the use of the light pole that's right behind the home seating of the football field. And they're mounting a minor antenna there that will amplify the signal throughout the community.
And it doesn't interfere with anything at the stadium?
Nothing.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Okay.
So 400 some odd dollars for space in a light pole. Alright. How many other light poles do we have? So there's some great donations in this list, this is all on the web. Any other thoughts, questions?
I'm amazed at the generosity of our community members and our staff members who are constantly giving not only of their time, but also of their money to help our students. I mean, it's always amazing to me when I read these.
Any other thoughts? No questions?
Agreed.
Call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
We don't have anything under finance? Dr. Dixon?
We do.
Oh, we do?
Mm-hmm. There, where's it at?
I think they put it under.
Oh, they put it under my report. I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. It was moved out of the consent, sorry.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Dixon, you're.
Okay, I just have a couple of things, um, passing around, just a legal update for you that's going to give you some info, more information about student and staff walkouts and some legislation behind it. We publicly stated that we support it and our students are working with our administrative team last week and I will send to you a Google Doc of all the activities that, uh, that are going to take place, including the students at options. So, yes, so the students at options, they, um, their building slogan, slogan is student violence, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, school violence is not an option. And so 45 students, um, from the AM session have signed up to participate in a student organized march beginning at 10:00 AM around the, um, the building and concluding at the walkway that runs perpendicular to North Taylor Avenue. The students are planning to be all dressed in black and hold poster boards supporting students' rights to learn, students' rights to learn in a, in violence-free schools. At the conclusion of the march, students that participated will move into an orderly fashion to the skyroom for a debriefing period. So part of our, um, message to our principals is making sure students have an opportunity to debrief and talk about their experience. Um, at the high school, they are still working, but I think one of the students spoke about what they're doing, but they're also going to have an opportunity to debrief on their activity. And, um, we heard the middle school students, there's going to be some change in their approach. Um, and so we're excited about the students having an opportunity, but we want to make sure that they have an opportunity to debrief and I think that's when the teachers come in too, because the teachers can help them talk about what they've experienced and, and the why, and I think that's very important. So I applaud the teachers union for supporting, um, these efforts. We've not, um, um, talked, I've not, I should say, talked with our elementary school principals, our principals about what they're doing. I know there are some other schools in the surrounding areas, some other elementary schools that are participating, so we will follow up and see if some of our elementary students, uh, if schools are participating in some way. I think for the, the younger students, if, if they have something, they want a message that they want to give, is, some suggestions I'm sure from teachers would give them, we would definitely support their efforts as, as well. We will have extra security at our middle school and our high school. Ryan Loretz has talked to the city, so we want to make sure we have extra presence there and the support of our teachers. I'm confident with our teachers being there with our students, um, that this is going to be a successful event and I know all the board members, if you're available, I know, you know, we've been invited to attend as well, as well as our central office staff, we kind of divide and conquer about which events, uh, sites that we would be located. The other thing I have to report on, um, is our first ring group has been working on some advocacy around House Bill 70. And House Bill 70 is where, and I have some documents to give you, House Bill 70 is where the state has, um, when they decide that those schools are going to receivership and have a CEO come in. So we have some first ring colleagues who are unfortunately in this situation this year, um, next year rather, Warrensville Heights, East Cleveland and Maple Heights. So as a first ring district, we decided to come together and meet with some state representatives and some, um, people from BASSA around what could we do to advocate for those three school districts and also advocate for other school districts before it gets to the point of a receivership? And how can we get them to change the language, um, that's currently there? We don't want any school to be subject of this, of a state takeover. We've seen what happened currently in Youngstown and what's happening in Lorraine. It's not good for the community, it's not good for the students and, and the staff there. So we are trying to approach it, um, before the school districts kind of get in there. We know three school districts are currently unfortunately, um, faced with it, but we have, we're working to that end. So I would, I, what I've given you, we've, we have a website, it's not live yet, but here's some of the things that's on that, that you would find when it becomes, uh, live. We talk about what the House Bill is and what we are doing, um, to stop those state takeovers. It's unfortunate, but it's happening and we want to join together and say, stop it. So all, 16 of us, plus Cleveland, even though Cleveland is not a part of the first ring, um, and they are not, they have the Cleveland plan, so they're not considered, they would never get this designation, but they are supporting our efforts as well. So I'm proud of the work, I've had a chance to kind of meet some people I've never would have met before because of this conversation. We have, um, our, uh, mayors and, um, city managers part of this, some, this efforts as well. We have the first ring mayor group and we're talking about what can we do so that our schools are not, and our communities are not labeled by these report cards. So, um, I'm glad Tanisha's here because she's been a part of that and also Mayor Britton, our new mayor, um, in University Heights has joined us in our meetings and our efforts as well. So it's something that we're doing, that we're advocating for some new legislation. Um, there's a meeting on March 27th in which we are meeting with another state representative and I'll keep you posted, um, on that. That's all for me.
Scott, your treasurer's report.
So we have two items for action under the treasurer's report, uh, the first being the tax rate resolution. This is something that would typically be, uh, on, uh, as, on a consent agenda, but because we have new board members, we wanted to separate it out this time. But this is an annual requirement that you all approve the tax rates as put forward by the county, uh, so that they have the legislative authority to levy the taxes that we are entitled to receive. So, um, you know, and there, and there are, there can be modifications to this on an annual basis, so anytime there's a new levy, anytime there's a, a shift in a levy, uh, based on bond debt or anything like that, um, they make those changes, send these out to all districts, all districts, uh, the board's approve and then they're returned and, uh, and the county does their thing. So this is, um, this is something that is typical and, and, uh, is brought to you for your approval tonight. Similarly, we have the five-year forecast, um, which again is, is separated from the consent agenda. You'll notice that, uh, the, the five-year forecast for March has no changes, um, from the previous forecast and as I indicated, well, it was just a couple of weeks ago, we're back-to-back regular meetings, um, we will expect some changes, some significant changes in, uh, the April, May and, and certainly the June timeframe, once the fiscal year starts to close, once we get the tax receipts in for the year, which we're getting the bulk of those in in May, but we will see some, um, final settlements come in and, in, uh, probably the May timeframe. So at this point, the, the five-year forecast is similar to that that you've seen before, no material changes. So both of those items, we need, uh...
Okay, so starting on the tax rate.
Yes.
Resolution. Do I have a motion?
Motion to, uh, accept the tax rate resolution.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Further comments?
I have a dumb question. What is the sinking fund? Everything else made perfect sense to me.
Mm-hmm. The sinking fund is, uh, is related to the bond, so it's just, um, accumulating the money that's necessary to repay any of the bond debt is considered to be a sinking fund typically. So I think in this case, I'm going to double check on this tax.
So is it like a heat sink? I'm just trying to figure out what that means.
Oh, for us where we have not, no, so the bond retirement is actually separated. Oftentimes, if there's debt, um, it, it will be a requirement that there, there will be money, uh, taken and set aside, uh, in a sinking fund to repay that debt. Here, we have our full 5.7 mils under the bond retirement fund, according to the county, so I'm not sure what they would distinguish and how they would distinguish those types of debt, but for us, all of our debt is under a bond retirement fund. So sinking, sinking fund though, that's typically what that's used for, is to sink, is to take your money.
So it's just a holding place before you pay back? Okay.
But for us, we, we have no, uh, no amount there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, thoughts? Call the roll. Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright? Do I have a motion to accept the five-year forecast?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
I would just like to point out that, uh, once again, the five-year forecast shows us, um, sending just shy of eight-point-three million dollars to charter schools, voucher schools, and the Peterson. So, I just think that that's something I want to continue to put out in front of people, that, uh, Scott, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but how does that relate to the money that we're getting from the last time our community blessed us with a levy?
Yeah, that would be in excess of that.
So, we are sending out literally more than we are bringing in than our taxpayers entrusted to us in the last levy.
And just ballpark? Rough ballpark, about half the money we get from the state to operate our entire school district goes out the door for just a few select students. With a local match, but that's a whole nother.
Correct.
Any other comments? Call the roll, please. Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yeah.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
So, the next thing on the agenda is the Top of the Hill discussion.
Top of the Hill discussion?
And I think at one point, we were expecting to vote on this tonight. But we don't have any documents or anything like that, so we're gonna see how far this discussion goes and...
Correct, we're gonna bring, um, our legal counsel, Mr. Seed, up to the podium, uh, to give an update in terms of how the, the conversations have gone, and, and as Superintendent pointed out, we have Tanisha Bryley here, also Tim Boland is here from the city, so, um, if there are any questions or, or, as the conversation goes on, um, they're available to answer those as well. So, we do have hot off the presses, some, um, some draft documents for you, so let me pass those out, uh, in terms of a proposed resolution and a compensation agreement.
Thank you.
As well as some thoughts from your legal counsel. But at this point, um, there have been lots of conversations, uh, there's been lots of work done, uh, to try to get this, this language, uh, to the point that it is, and, um, I'll turn it over to Mr. Seed to kind of give you the synopsis of what's, what's happened and where we are.
Yes, uh, thank you, board members. Um, work has been done with Tim, Tanisha, the lawyers for, um, the developer and lawyers for the city to work on a compensation agreement, um, for Top of the Hill. I think we've, we've gone through some issues about the base compensation. The developer estimates a value of forty-four million dollars, and up to a value of forty-four million dollars, school board would receive or will receive twenty-five percent of what it normally would receive. We also had discussions about if the value exceeds forty-four million dollars, which there's an expectation it may, that the school board will receive additional compensation above forty-four million to fifty million. School board will receive, on the first forty-four million of value, it'll continue to receive twenty-five percent. But on the additional increment above forty-four to fifty million, the school board's percentage will increase to thirty-three-point-three percent. Then, if the value were to achieve fifty million dollars or greater, above fifty million dollars, the school board will receive fifty percent above fifty million dollars. So, the more successful the project is, the school board can receive additional revenue from the project. We all hope it will be a very successful project. So, we worked through those issues in the last week in drafting the agreement. Another issue that we've been working through is assisting the developer and the city with the financing of the project. An issue is, issue is how, what's the priority of the payments to the school board and for the debt service? Recall from our discussions about a TIF, property taxes continue to be paid by the owner of the property, or in this case, it'll be the less C, 'cause the city will be leasing the land to the developer. But property taxes continue to be paid, they're sent to the county, and then the county will send them to the city. Okay? The request has been made that, to, and to enhance the funding for the project, that the first priority for taxes will be u- to be used for, to pay debt service. There's an estimate of a certain amount of debt service, and the second priority will be to pay the school board compensation. The city and the developer estimate that there'll be adequate compensation, there'll be adequate pilots or revenue generated from the project to pay both the debt service and the school compensation. And we've been working through those issues, um, with the language in the agreement to make sure that, that those issues are properly addressed. But the interesting thing that we've, Scott and I have been dealing with is, you know, moving the priority, having the school board as a second priority instead of a first priority, it does enhance, it does enhance the ability for this project to, 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 to work. It's imperative, I think, on the part of, for the city and for the developer, to gen- to be able to generate, um, enough annual revenue so that as much money can be borrowed on the bonds initially for the project. And by having a first priority to be used to pay the debt service, that allows for additional funds to be generated, more so than if the school board was a first priority on the, on the TIF funds. And one of the things that we'll be looking at in the next few days, as you review the agreement, is making sure that there's a comfort level, um, with the schools being a second priority, even though, now, with this, even though that the developer and city have worked in language, that the projections are, and the intent is, is that the school board will be compensated and the debt service will be paid.
How much, um, what are those bonds worth? I mean, who's, I mean, the bondholders are putting in a X amount of dollars, putting them to the project. What, what approximately is that?
Okay, the, right now, the general model is, is that the forty-four million dollars can generate, the forty-four million dollars of property value can generate about two-point-two million dollars a year. Tim, can correct me if I'm wrong. The, the, at ballpark, the developer is estimating that their debt service, interest, and other expenses will be approximately one-point-eight million dollars. Leave a balance of four-hundred thousand dollars, which is the slightly greater than the estimate of the school board compensation. I can go s- let me, let me go a little further. What the city and developer are proposing is that the developer is going to agree that they will pay property taxes, or what's called service payments, to the city on a value of forty-four million dollars, even if the property value for tax assessment is lower than forty-four million dollars. Essentially, they'll be paying two-point-two million dollars a year, even if the tax value would only generate one-point-six million. The developer will have an obligation to pay taxes or payments on a forty-four million dollar valuation to generate adequate money every year to pay the debt service and the school compensation payment.
Is that permanent?
That would be during the whole thirty years of the TIF. Further, the developer is going, the city in, in the agreement and the developer are going to commit that there's going to be what's called a, um, coverage ratio of one to two, one-point-two to one coverage ratio. So, for example, um, I mentioned before that they project to, to issue bonds that can generate, um, two-point-two million dollars. With a one-point-two to one coverage ratio, only one-point-eight million of the two-point-two million can be used for debt service, interests, and other expenses, leaving four-hundred thousand dollars. That this will be a commitment within the agreement between the city and schools with the coverage ratio to create essentially a increment to cover the school board payment. Now, this is on the base compensation. If a new levy is passed by the school board, that will just increase the amount of payment that does not, um, interfere with this calculation. And I'll let Tim, if he has anything else on the, if I have... Go, come up here.
Thank you, David. Thank you, David. Uh, thank you, board. Um, no, I think, uh, David summarized it very well. I think that the developer, um, you know, in some of the language and their attorneys, um, that they've put forward had, with the one-point-two, uh, 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 coverage, uh, ratio, uh, one to one-point-two, that they've tried to give as much assurance as they can, uh, that, uh, we will have, and all their projections have, uh, illustrated that as well, that there will be, um, adequate debt service and, uh, compensation for the schools. But as David mentioned, it, uh, it enhances the project to be able to, uh, have that structure of debt service as the, um, uh, uh, first priority and, uh, the, uh, compensation, uh, payments as a second priority. I think the, um, uh, uh, again, the project also will be able to see, uh, at the point when, uh, the financing is about to be issued, we'll be able to see, and it's in the agreement, uh, how it was, how it's divided out, how it looks in terms of the valuation, so we'll get a really good chance to see how it's going to, um, look and, and, and essentially verify the, uh, projections that we've received all the way up to this point.
Kind to an amortization schedule when you, when you have a new home mortgage? Shows you, uh, over a thirty-year mortgage?
That's a good analogy, yeah. And it'll be, you know, you have that run right before the project is, um, is done, and that's what, uh, what they've committed to as well, our developer.
So, let's take about a hundred steps back, just so... Just because we're sort of continuing a conversation that we've had over multiple meetings. We have a series of parking lots right now that we're earning, and these are all ball- ballpark numbers, about twenty thousand dollars a year, okay? And we, um, if we work through this TIF with you in this, in this co-agreement, we're gonna earn essentially four-hundred thousand dollars a year.
That's correct.
And those numbers have been, and the realistic ability to earn that kind of monies that the developer can get, that they can pay the city, we vetted those numbers, and our staff and lawyers feel that is, um, comfortable and, and realistic. We know the city has negotiated a lot of things, um, which is really great for the, the citizens. I mean, you essentially own the land, so we have problems with some developments in town. You look at, I love the, actually, we look out our window here and we see University Square, you look, you look out your window, your quote is, "I see severance." And this, this gives us the ability, if things just don't work well, to work closer with the city to find a better solution as opposed to have this, this tied up. We're not putting any investment in this to get any of the monies. There is some risk, which you're explaining to us this evening, and we talked about it length today, of who gets paid first, and it comes down to, the bondholders are putting up the money, we're not putting up the money, but we're letting the deal go through. They get paid first, we get paid second. But if we feel comfortable with the finances and the numbers, we as a board need to make the decision if we're comfortable with that piece. Is that...
Agreed.
Anything I screwed up here, or is this, I mean? I don't know about that, but I think you guys figured all this stuff out. We're just, one of many hurdles, I think, you guys need to go through to make this thing go through. Tanisha, you have anything else to share with us?
Thank you for having me, Tanisha Bryley, City Manager for Cleveland Heights. I just want to point out a couple of things. It's, one, has been, um, a, a really great pleasure working with your staff and David Seed on this project. The developer, I think, um, and his team, I, I think we've been working together very well. There's been a lot of hours going into, a lot of, uh, quick conference calls and trying to rally the troops. Um, I want to personally apologize that we weren't able to get to the finish line in, in time to get this information in your packet on Friday, and, um, myself reporting to a very similar board, I understand, uh, the position that that puts you in. So, we want to make sure you're comfortable, have an opportunity to review the documents. But I think you'll hear, uh, from your team and from David that, uh, we are essentially, uh, David said we were at the one-yard line. I think we're, I think we're a, 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 a nose, right? The football, the football nose, uh, to the finish line. Uh, there may be one sentence that we're tweaking, that we're working on, uh, and it's just, it's just been incredible, uh, which I think is very necessary for a project like this, uh, for our community, and we're very excited to move it forward, and we appreciate your support, and we're here to answer any questions that you have, so, thank you.
I have a question. When are we gonna get Exhibit A? And when are we gonna get Schedule One? That's not, I mean, obviously, this is the first, we're seeing it, and there's a couple of blank pages. So, when will those documents be ready for us to review?
I think Scott had, he made, I think Exhibit A, I'd sent that over today. It's an attachment, it's a, it's, it's the map showing the property with the parcels on it.
So, we probably have...
You may have received it in an earlier presentation by...
Yeah, I think, uh, board, you might recall the presentation back in January. There was a aerial map of, and a list of parcels.
Right.
That, I believe is A.
Schedule, Schedule One is, is a list of the tax rates for, um, the school district in the city of Cleveland Heights, and that will be attached, we'll do that when we send it out, again, probably later today or tomorrow.
Okay.
I, I do believe that was also included in that packet, though, that we gave you, so if you just wanted...
But there's been no changes to what you gave us a month ago?
No, no, I would, the only change, um, I think that we, I think all the terms we discussed and presented are still intact. David did a fantastic job of, of maximizing, uh, the deal for the school district as he should, and so the enhancement is, uh, those thresholds that David was walking through. So, there's sort of, here's the base level of compensation that the school district would receive, and if the project does extremely well, which we all hope, uh, and we move to a value from forty-four to fifty, uh, then that, that percentage goes up for the school district to thirty-three-point-three, and then beyond fifty, uh, fifty percent. So, that was a, um, that was an ask by Scott and David, and it was, I thought it was a great ask, and, uh, the developer and his consultant and, and team was able to work that out. So, that's the enhancement. Otherwise, all the terms that we presented to you at, at that meeting, um, that we all had together are still intact.
So, the schedule with all the payment numbers, that's, nothing's changed on that, other than there's now the additional, if there's additional valuation?
Correct.
Okay. And will we get to see that, so we can look at those numbers as well?
Yeah, well, the threshold, the language is in the agreement.
It's on, it's in the agreement, um, and about the thresholds. What I'll probably do is give some examples, um, if the value, it's at forty-four million, what the school board would receive. If the value hits fifty million, maybe you, I'll give you a few examples, it's sixty million or seventy million.
We all hope.
They like, they like that. But, but the, um, but I'll give some examples, um, in an email to Scott that he can distribute to the board.
Okay, thank you.
How, uh, a couple, a couple of things. So, um, how often is a, um... So, how often is a development valued? So, you know, how is that determined? How often is that determined? And the reason that I'm, that I'm asking is, so, sort of big picture, and treat me like a kindergartner, because this is my first, my first dance, I'm hearing a couple of things and connecting dots. So, as the value of the project goes up, our tax is increasing incrementally at thresholds. I'm assuming that as the value goes down, the same thing happens.
If, in the, within $0 to 44 million, if it goes down or up, we get 25% within that range.
Okay.
And that's about-
25% is our basement.
It's our basement. So if it has a million-dollar value or a $40 million value, we'll get 25%. The property is valued, like all of our properties, by the county auditor, subject to revision by a property owner or the school board, if either felt the property was improperly assessed.
I see. And so by putting us, also just reviewing, by putting us number two and the service of the debt number one, I heard you say that this allows them to borrow more to apply toward the construction, et cetera, the development of this piece of land. So there's two things that I came up with that could be the result of the ability to borrow more. Thing number one would be for them to invest from their own pockets, the same amount, borrow more, create a bigger, more valuable development, which would then impact day one, the value of the development. Thing two, though, would be for us to increase their ability to borrow more. They would develop at the same level, but have less skin in the game.
Okay, that's, that was part of the discussions we've had today. Firstly, what's been presented to us is that, using the number 2.2 million, we might get the one, if the schools was first, there would be 1.8 million left. For the developer, that would leave of a 1 to 2 ratio, 1.1 to 2 ratio, that would allow them to only borrow 1.4, 1.5 million, because their balance would have to be, it would limit what they could borrow. By, with the priority that the city and the developer are asking for, it allows them to borrow more. However, there's a $44 million minimum value payment that's in the agreement, that'll be in the city's agreements with the developer. So their, their, you know, I asked the question today, is can you just borrow on 48 million, $50 million? And the answer is actually no, because there's a source of revenue that's coming in, it's based on a $44 million value. So a bond issuer or underwriters are not going to approve the issuance of bonds if there's not a revenue, a viable revenue source to pay for those bonds. And if they have, Tim or Tanisha have anything more to say on that, they can, on the $44 million, that by switching the priority, it does not allow for the developer to borrow more than what the framework that we've been discussing because of the limitations on the service payments.
Essentially, yes. I mean, that's correct.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, so the debt ratio that's, that is in the agreement, actually, if they stray from that materially, then that has to come back to the school board for approval. So there's, there is a safeguard there in terms of, that, you know, you can't have a wildly different debt amount than what is put forward in the analysis.
Let me explain that a little bit. The, what the developer, what the city are committing to is a 1.1, a 1.2 to 1 debt ratio. So that, in my example, 2.2 million, they could only use 1.8 million. They would be forced to leave the 400,000 for payment of the school payment. If that coverage ratio was lower, that would impede on the ability to make sure the school payment was made. Let's say it was 1.1 to 1. That would, that would limit the ability to make sure that there was $400,000 available to pay the schools. And in the agreement, you'll see that the city and developer cannot have any bond issued where the debt, debt ratio is lower than 1.2 to 1. They would need your approval to do so.
So that coverage. And just, just because I know there's, as you said, President Posh backing up 100 steps, there could be some, some steps in between that we may have forgotten because we've not had the conversation every day. We keep focusing on the 44 million and what the TIF is going to generate. Obviously, there'll be multiple sources, and uses of capital stack will be very interesting. So the TIF is a major piece of moving the project forward, but it's not the only source of funding, and there's certainly a lot of the developer's own funds going into the project as well. So overall, we're talking about $75 million or more of total investment just to get to this $44 million value. So just to remember that piece of it, the investment to pull the project off is well beyond this value, the assessed value that we're working the pro forma off of, and we hope, of course, that we get 60 or 70 million, as David projects, and everyone gets, gets more money and the project gets better. But just wanted to point that out, because even I sometimes have to remind myself, we're so focused on that threshold number of the 44 million, we're forgetting all the rest of the money that's going into the pot, and the city's contributing as well with the value of the land. So, you know, we all got, we've all got some skin in the game, and we've done, I think, and with David's help and Scott's help, trying to minimize any risk for the Board, and with the development agreement, I think we've really minimized risk to the city. So the developer's taking all the risk, and we hope that, that gets recognized as well.
Can you please clarify a misconception which is flying around right now? And that misconception is that the payments in lieu of taxes, the $400,000, would not begin until after the 30-year TIF. So say very clearly in short words out loud, please, how those payments come and when? Because that misconception needs to be cleared up. Thank you.
No, when, when the property is built, let's say two or three years from now, if it, let's say it achieves the $44 million value, the school board's payment would be $400,000. Again, assuming a 2.2 million generated, leaving a million eight for the debt service and expenses, will leave 400,000 that would be paid to the school board in 2023 or 2022, the year following the completion of the project. In addition, while the project is being built, actually, let's say they start construction later this year, and there's some value for additional value as of January 1 of 2019, and then '20 or '21, the school board will receive some incremental additional revenue as the property is being built. It'll take two or three years to complete the construction and stabilization.
And in the meantime, the current tax revenue, which is the 21,000 and dribbles, 218, thank you, which is the tax that we currently receive off of the undeveloped land, that continues during construction as well, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to say that very clearly, because the things I have read were really off the wall, and I want to make sure that we get that correct. So we have a base floor level of revenue regardless of what the final project is valued at. If the project is valued higher than what all of the math is based, is assuming, then our percentage will increase according to the brackets which you have been working on. So, and during the time of the construction, we continue to receive the same taxes which we are getting anyway, with nothing happening.
Correct.
And there's a chance that during construction itself, we may receive slightly more as the value increases because there's partial construction.
Correct.
Thank you.
And so by my calculations, if we didn't do this, and we continued to collect $21,218 a year over 30 years, that would equate to $636,540.
Whatever, right.
But if we voted for the TIF, that would represent $12,626,340 over 30 years.
Take your math.
At a minimum.
Yeah.
That's if we were at the 44 million valuation.
Correct.
Or less.
Or less.
And the other thing to remember, too, is that, that the component of the compensation agreement that says if there is a new levy that is passed after the development, then that is additional, and that's at its full value, on the full value of the property.
Thank you for reminding us of that, Scott.
Yes, thank you.
So what's really nice about these TIF deals versus tax abatement is, tax abatement basically means we're walking away without any money, but by working with you in this, we get, I will be generous share, you could, some would argue whether it could be more generous or less generous, but I'm going to use the word generous, generous share of the revenues that are coming through that project.
Yeah, I think I've said before, the city wants a project that has, that's unique and is a, that has some density. The city could have, over these years, just sold the property for a, another apartment building that may generate 100 or 200,000 a year if fully taxed to the school board, just another apartment building. This is a dense project, which, if successful, and we hope it will be, it allows for a density and value, now while we're making concessions on potential property taxes, we may equal or exceed the revenue as opposed to just having another apartment building on the site.
So we need to think of a process amongst us as how we're going to go through reviewing this, asking more questions, when we want to vote on it. Are there any other questions we have for David and the city and Scott?
Not yet. I'm sure we'll have lots of questions after we've read that.
Yeah, once we start reading.
And I think that is the stumbling block. You sent an email to us on Friday that basically said you didn't think it was going to get on the agenda because you don't have any documents. You and I had a conversation today, I mean, this is just sort of being transparent, we had a conversation today, it said, well, we really worked literally through the weekend and trying to get something, because the city, you know, needs this in order to get to the developer so that they could continue to move forward. And we're very clear, and we wanted to give you a decision tonight on this, but I know, at least in one response from one of my peers, we have to read the documents before we vote on anything, which is obvious. So, the next meeting we have is actually a joint meeting with city council, and we've noticed the meeting in such a way, so we can actually vote on this at the time.
Correct.
I will not be at that meeting.
You won't be at that meeting.
I will not be at that meeting. I'm with the middle school kids we saw tonight.
Remember that.
Down in Columbus.
Well, perhaps we can convene-
And you can't vote over the phone or anything like that? It's got to be-
You've got to be in person.
Yeah. And then we meet the following-
On the 20th, yeah.
We meet on the 20th, yeah.
Long meeting?
Is the 20th too late? Can we do a, I mean, we could do a special meeting? I mean, there's, there's, there's things we could do to, to work with you guys on this.
We, Tanisha, we've discussed another option is, we can, at your meeting Monday, vote to approve the resolution with a condition. It would be conditioned upon approving the compensation agreement. We would have to come back on the 20th to approve the compensation agreement. So we'll be sent, at the meeting on Monday, the school board will be approving the 30-year 100% TIF conditioned on approving a compensation agreement.
Week later.
And then you would just approve the compensation agreement at your next meeting. For the city, that would give, and the developer, that would give them the go-ahead that they, that the school board is approving the exemption, or the TIF, because I believe the city has a meeting on the-
We have a meeting on the 19th.
On the 19th.
So, yeah, so I would, I would, I would propose that that's Plan C, and maybe Plan B, if you are able to pull it together, would possibly be a special meeting that happens so that we, our city council can approve the agreement on the 19th. So if you approve the agreement after the 19th, then we're now rolling into April for approval. So if you can pull off a special meeting, that could be a Plan B, and Plan C possibly is the approval with the condition, approval of the resolution with the condition. I think that, I think Plan C extends us to April. We, yes, we could, we could take a look, a closer look at Plan C.
So, the 14th.
There's, there's no limitation, there's no, there's no law that says one body has to approve it first before another one, but by, but by approving the resolution, we'd be sending them, you would be considering it before city council, you'd be, you would be at least giving direction to city council that you are in agreement with the TIF.
I am available on 14th.
I'm on the, I'm in Chicago on the 14th, and that was the walkout date, and I was thinking, I really wanted to be here for the walkout, and thinking maybe everybody wants to be here for the walkout. When do you return from your-
The afternoon of the 13th, probably around 2:00.
I could do an afternoon.
Let's do, oh, you, we, we would have to do it after work, because-
Correct, okay.
Yeah.
So I like the idea-
Some of us have to work for a living, so just-
I like the idea of doing another meeting also, because it gives the community a little bit of time to let us know what their thoughts are.
Yeah, I'm good with that. You know, my concern is we generally don't record a meeting, a special, a special meeting.
Fair enough, but they'll, at least they'll know that we're-
We're, we're not recording the joint meeting with the city, are we? Do we do that?
Why wouldn't we?
No. I think we do that.
Okay.
I think that's a little overkill if we did.
So you want the 13th? Maybe it's 6:00 good, or 7:00? 6:30 is good for you?
6:30 would be great.
6:30 or the 13th?
13.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Okay, so let's make this tentative. I don't have all of my work calendars here. I should be able to do it. Why don't we try to confirm that by the end of this week? So let's do this. Can we, as individuals, read the documents, look at all this stuff? Is there a way that we can get these posted up on Board Docs?
Yes, we'll get all the documents posted online so that they're available to the community.
Good.
We will, I, I made a note to get copies of the previous presentation out to all the Board members as well, and we'll make sure that those are available to the community too.
Yeah, so, I mean, is, I think retroactively, if you could just get them in Board Docs and get them in the agenda, because more and more people I'm talking to are going into that, and-
Yep.
And greatly expressing concern about, hey, I don't see this here, I need this here, and it's like, hmm? That's good.
So everyone would be here on Tuesday the 13th?
6:30.
6:30. Yep, I can do that. Okay. And then Jody, you won't be here for Monday for the joint meeting?
No.
Gotcha.
Okay. I have to chaperone middle school children. Then I'm committed to that.
Fine, fine, fine.
Those are, those are fun-
They are fun.
Those are fun times, actually, as in enjoying when you can, when your kids grow up, and you're no longer worried about taping middle school kids into their hotel rooms.
Tape on the doors a little bit.
I'll be exhausted, I will admit that, when I'm here for the 13th.
Thank you for being here, thanks for all the hard work here, this is good.
So, we have. Go ahead. One last quick item under treasurer's report. Superintendent asked me to attend on her behalf because she was out of town on Monday. The first ring superintendents had Representative Bob Cup come, present to them on, he has actually assembled a task, task force to look at school funding, and so he has a group of treasurers, superintendents, and, and others who are looking at, there are eight or nine different components to that, from what's an adequate number or base number to, you know, special ed weights, CTE, Mr. Callender's on, on one of those subgroups that meets, and, and so they're gathering information. He wanted to, to put something together that was kind of off-cycle because in the time, and really take some time to explore and come forward with a comprehensive school funding proposal that they can bring forward to whoever the new governor is, so that for the next biennial budget, they could consider that. So he did come in, he, he listened to the superintendents, the superintendents asked questions, and he kind of laid out some of, some of the process more than the specifics yet, so that's still ongoing, but just wanted to report out and put that on your radar that, again, in terms of advocacy, we're continuing to be involved in that conversation, and one of the subgroups is specifically related to vouchers. And so I've spoken with that group in particular and submitted some information because they seem to be focused mostly on charter schools, but, you know, certainly our big concern too is the Ed Choice voucher and how that's affecting us. So I want to make sure that that's in front of them as well, and in particular, the fact that we're losing money for those vouchers to students who wouldn't necessarily ever come to our district, and so that's, that should be a particular concern to them. So, so we're continuing to work with them, and we're continuing to speak with the legislators and advocate, so just wanted to give a little report out on that. It was, it was, it was a good session, and I think there will be more, and as we get some more details in terms of what they come forward with and what they want to propose, we'll, you know, whether or not the governor and the legislature ever accepts that, I think his intention is to just make sure that they're educated and in a place where they can start to have some conversations in that short time when the biennial budget is crafted, so.
Okay, treasurer's, treasurer's report done?
Done.
Okay, board president's report. So I, two weeks ago, hogged a lot of our time going through proposed board priorities and committee assignments, and one of my homework assignments with staff was to match these together. I haven't done a whole lot of that since our last meeting, a lot of, at least my time was spent on these two resolutions that are going to be coming up in new business. So that work is continuing on that. I think one of the things we talked about, some initial conversations, was taking down off the website, but the board goals were there, these are the elected board goals versus these goals. I mean, these are things that we want to do as an elected body that support all this stuff. I mean, for example, one of them is review this strategic plan.
I'm going to sneeze, excuse me.
I don't know if anybody sneezes when they're talking. Okay, but okay. So that work is ongoing, but just since we're all here, were there any additional thoughts since our last conversation about the board goals and committee assignments? Has anything changed to you guys? Okay, let's move on. Any unfinished business? So, new business, we have two items, maybe you'd want to add some things, but I think these are two important things that we've shared amongst ourselves and with our lawyers. We have two resolutions in front of us. One of them is a school safety resolution that basically addresses gun violence and our reaction to that from a board resolution perspective and what we can send, I mean, we heard some great voices here tonight, this is our voice as an elected body and what we want our elected officials to hear about. And also, another resolution regarding rejecting House Bill five twelve, which is a whole nother conversation, both important, we have so many important things, but, so, do I have a motion so we can begin discussing this gun violence resolution?
I move that we consider the gun violence resolution.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I would love for someone to read this, just so everybody hears it.
I can read it.
You want to read it?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
I've got it right here in front of me.
Perfect.
A resolution of the Board of Education of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District, County of Cuyahoga County, calling on the President of the United States, the Governor of the State of Ohio, the United States Congress, and the Ohio General Assembly to enact common sense gun laws and mental health legislation to protect our children, our teachers and staff, and our schools. Whereas the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District Board of Education is clear in its policy and practice that the purpose of education is to facilitate the development of the potential of each and every student, and that philosophy includes our full commitment to maintaining schools that are safe, secure, and supportive. And whereas, the board further remains committed to a weapon-free school environment that prohibits students, employees, and community members from possessing, storing, making, or using a weapon, including a concealed weapon, in a school safety zone and any setting that is under the control and supervision of the district. And whereas, despite school safety being a number one priority for schools nationwide, school violence has become an epidemic in this country, and whereas, that violence must be addressed by our nation's leaders without partisan politics or private interests controlling the conversation or the resultant preventative actions. And whereas, the children and school employees of our nation deserve to attend school without fear of death or injury, and their families deserve to send them to school without the same fear. And whereas, recognizing this, students have seized the nation's attention with a demand for strong action to prevent preventable gun violence, and this board supports students in their peaceful and independent call for action. And whereas, likewise, residents of our community have been innocent victims of gun violence and are calling for common sense laws that balance the right to own a firearm with the right to protect our students, educators, and staff, and community members from gun violence. And whereas, multiple polls have shown the majority of Americans support action to enact stricter gun laws to prevent dangerous individuals from attaining firearms. And whereas, mental health issues have been identified as an underlying cause of many preventable gun death tragedies, and enhanced social, emotional learning in schools is one of the many ways in which to address these serious mental health concerns. And whereas, this Board of Education finds that enacting common sense gun laws and mental health legislation would protect the children, teachers, staff, schools, and residents of this district. Therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District Board of Education implores the President of the United States, the Governor of the State of Ohio, the United States Congress, and the Ohio General Assembly to protect students, school employees, and residents by enacting legislation directed to the following. Number one, banning the, banning the sale of assault-style firearms. Number two, raising the minimum age to purchase firearms to twenty-one. Number three, banning high-capacity magazines and bump stocks. Number four, requiring universal background checks that include relevant mental health information and previous interactions with the law. Number five, ensuring a complete universal database of those banned from purchasing firearms. Number six, closing the private sale and gun show loophole that waives the necessity of background checks. Number seven, providing funding, including funding for schools for enhanced mental health services and substance abuse treatment so that all individuals, including children, have sufficient access to these services. That's the resolution.
Yay.
Yeah.
It's the most comprehensive one I've seen.
Yeah, and short. I mean, two weeks ago, we looked at a seven-page document that.
That had covered less than a third of this.
Yeah, that was a little politically divisive. I mean, this is not a red state, blue state thing, this is an issue where we need people with common sense to step up and solve this issue. What do you guys have to say about this? I mean, do you have?
One of the things that, that makes me so interested in it is that this evening, for the second time, we have heard our students, and, and really, this language, I think, supports our students, and hopefully, I hope, will encourage our students and, and give them a clear signal that we are with them. You know, this, this epidemic of gun violence is, it, it's just everywhere, and I love that this body is considering this resolution, and I'm very proud to be part of that consideration. I, I do have a nuts and bolts question that relates to both of the resolutions we're considering tonight. Where do these go? I mean, it'll feel good, you know, if we decide to, to thus resolve, or, but do we forward these to the Ohio Legislature? I mean, how, tell me the process from here.
We would forward these, also, we give them to advocacy groups, and they can post on their websites, just remember, like Corky O'Callahan?
Mm-hmm.
This is one that he can post on his website as well, but that's how we would distribute them out, because I know you received one from an organization, and one that was seven pages.
Mm-hmm.
We would forward this one, this version, to that organization, so we would get it out there, as well as our website, and we, we even let the media, Scott, will work with the media outlets to let them know that this happened tonight as well.
And I would say.
I'm sorry.
I would say we should share them with any other elected officials we know. I mean, I know, I have other elected officials I know, and we, you know, we will say, hey, we passed this resolution, and we'll share copies.
Exactly, yeah, it'll be a formal letter to all those legislators, and then this resolution will be attached to that, so, similar to the way we did when we built the state for the charter school money. We did a similar thing.
And there are a lot of organizations that are attaching this to their website, too, a lot.
I want to say that this is a very well-written document, I've got two typos, which I didn't catch earlier, and I apologize, but given the enormous amount of badly-written stuff out there about gun control, it was very important that we put together something that is coherent and clear and doesn't get into the weeds, you know? It's about policy in that sense.
Well, we have this draft, thank you, thanks to your efforts, and, and we kept working on it, working on it until we got it right, so, I don't want to leave that out. I mean, you did not settle for anything less than what we have put before you, so I think that's good, you made sure that you have the right language.
Well, it's important.
It's important, yeah.
You know, if we put our name to it, it has to be the right language.
Agreed.
And I'm proud that it's very comprehensive, it doesn't just address one issue, I feel like it addresses all the issues that could make a difference collectively.
I have some thoughts if nobody else has. So I think one of, I mean, the minute our elected officials say that they can, it's okay to sell assault rifles, they've essentially put a rubber stamp saying it's okay to use them. My mom would always say, if you have a gun, you're going to use it. I mean, we need to think, and this is not about the Second Amendment, I mean, I think people, the people that would take exception to this think we're attacking guns in the Second Amendment. I, I thoroughly disagree with that. I mean, we have constitutional rights for free speech, but we can't go in a theater and yell "fire," okay? But we could walk in with an AK-47? I mean, that just makes no sense to me, and I think we have to realize the, the NRA has done a phenomenal job at doing their job. They represent the gun manufacturers, they're a trade organization, that's what they do. It's their job to try to sell as many weapons as possible. So when you hear things like, let's arm the teachers, it's like, they want to sell more guns.
Of course they do. Guns don't have a shelf life. You know, if you look after your weapon, it will last forever, pretty much.
So.
So you, you can't increase sales unless you find a way to add customers, so.
So, I mean, we have a huge problem now, these guns are out there. I mean, hopefully, with this type of action, we can make sure people clearly understand it's not right. When you go to a school and you see most of those kids out, whether it's the front lawn, the bat lawn, whether it's in the cafeteria doing their sit-in and being concerned about gun violence, you're showing your peers how just unacceptable that is. I have no idea how, how much it's going to work, but, you know, you look at Martin Luther King and what he was able to say with his strong words, look at where we are as a country today. Hopefully, our kids with these voices, hopefully, our voices can make a difference, so.
Said.
Any other thoughts? Love to vote on this one.
So we just need to change the word attaining to obtaining, because attaining doesn't mean what we want it to mean. That's like the, before last, whereas on the first page.
That's noted.
Yes.
Call the roll.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a motion to discuss the resolution to reject House Bill five twelve?
So moved.
A second, I'm going to read this, put up with my dyslexia, my not getting words right and the whole bit, but I think it needs to be said. So, whereas, the Cleveland Heights University Heights School District Board of Education is clear in its policy and practice and the purpose of education to facilitate the development and potential of each and every student, and whereas, the Ohio General Assembly is considering legislation on this House Bill five twelve that transfers, transfers most of the powers of the elected State Board of Education and the Department of Education to a new cabinet agency that's under the sole authority of the governor, and whereas, the new proposed cabinet agency will be held, will be led by, will be led and staffed by political appointees, whereas, the elected office holders of the State Board of Education are being stripped of their authority, whereas, political appointees have no accountability to the public and generally do not need to be transparent when exercising their authority, and whereas, elected office holders are accountable to, to the public they serve and must be transparent when exercising their authority, and whereas, the majority of Americans demand accountability and transparency when it comes to setting public policy enforcement, enforcement of public policy and general governance, and whereas, this proposed cabinet agency goes against the will of the people because it lacks the level of public accountability and lacks the level of transparency of the entity it's replacing. So therefore, be resolved that the Cleveland Heights University Heights School District Board of Education implores the state, deplores the Governor of the State of Ohio and the Ohio General Assembly to reject House Bill five twelve. We've had a lot of people comment and share information about House Bill five twelve. You guys have anything to?
So, to me, as somebody who's sort of watched the governor, you know, I will, maybe I'll, I'll take a hundred steps back and, and remind us that when Governor Kasich took office, Ohio was ranked fifth in the nation in terms of public education, and now, not quite eight years later, we have slipped to number twenty-three. And so I think that we are right to be skeptical of anything that has the word "education" in it, that is a product of the governor's office. And as I looked at this, when I first saw it, I thought Jobs Ohio, which was the governor's, I, I believe, his, his first attempt to take the, the, a public entity and to turn it into a private entity, pretty much. entity, pretty much, which he controls. And Jobs Ohio has, is completely unaccountable. Even Auditor Yost is starting to question Jobs Ohio and has received, I think, preliminary approval to do one audit. This is exactly the same playbook. This is taking the public business, taking it out of public oversight, putting it in the hands of the few who are appointed and unaccountable. And this is utterly undemocratic. This is a coup. And we must fight back and we must fight back hard. And I really think that this is a piece, tonight is a wonderful example. Both of these are pieces of advocacy, which is something that the Board, as currently constituted, are very committed to advocating on behalf of our students and advocating on behalf of public education as a whole, as it serves our democracy. So.
I'd like to say that we're obviously a K through 12 school district, and so that's the, our primary focus about House Bill 512. But, one of its main faults is that it takes K through 12 education, and it takes all of our college and university education, and it takes all of our workforce development projects, and squashes them all together into one agency, which cannot handle all of the disparate needs of these three ways of thinking. And yes, of course, it strips power from people who we, as citizens, elect. And, oh, wait a minute, I thought we lived in a democracy. So.
I've been making several calls all week to many elected officials. I was looking for my...
To this list?
Yes, I was looking for my list. Yes, exactly. And interestingly, I've been getting a lot of voicemails and leaving my message, but the two live staffers I actually spoke with have said that they've been receiving a lot of calls on this, a lot of opposition. So, I would encourage anybody who's out there making calls to continue to do it. I think it is having an impact. And if you need the list, Malia has it, because I'm looking for mine. It's somewhere on me tonight. But definitely, it's making an impact and it's another thing that, you know, as a board, we have advocacy, and I take that very personally as an individual. And when I call, I say, I'm an elected official, and I say, I voted for my state school board rep for these reasons. And I think that adds credibility to the call. And I would encourage anybody who's against House Bill 512 to make those calls as well.
Well, I have to tell you, I'm a little shocked that, you know, I'm even going to vote yes for this because I'm not a big fan of the Ohio Department of Education. I mean, they, they've screwed up a lot. They've given us all sorts of, you know, crazy laws. I mean, I don't even know why I want to support them. But I got to tell you, it comes down to the selected, the elected office holders. You know, we elected these people to do a job, and they're being stripped away from their authority. And that's just wrong. It's just wrong. No matter how much I disagree with what the Ohio Department of Education does for us and how they set laws, at least they're fixing stuff, like, and they're going after Heacock. And so, I mean, you know, maybe there's some glimmers of hope here, but...
Well, and it's not a red or blue thing. This would be wrong regardless of which party was in office.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Very true.
And at least if you're electing them and you don't like them, you can vote against them. But if they're appointed, you have no recourse.
Right.
It's funny, this is coming from the party that wants less government. But, you know, we're not going to, I don't want to politicize this. If there's no other comments, let's call a roll. Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
We're nearing an end to our meeting. Correspondents, or Board Committee reports?
Bond Accountability Committee meets in today's...
Thursday.
Yep. I believe a bunch of us have been doing walkthroughs, but I think as we're getting late, maybe we should save that for another meeting to give some updates on some walkthroughs that we've done.
I just want to report that I was at, I'm part of the Reaching Heights Board, and the Reaching Heights Spelling Bee is coming up.
Yes.
And we, as a board, support that. So, I'm thinking that maybe the nobodies want to take that on.
What, you don't want to spell, Beverly?
Oh, I'll be there to support it.
I want to spell. I love spelling.
Good, we need a team.
Oh, yeah.
Think of a board team.
I think we should have a team.
Well, I'm terrible at spelling.
It doesn't matter. You go down in flames in the third round and everybody has a good time.
But, okay. I'm game.
When is it? When is it, Beverly?
What date? What date?
What's the date?
It is Wednesday, the 18th of April.
Yes, the 18th.
And usually, it's sandwiches and rolls at 6:00. Hit the stage at 7:00.
Done this before?
I have done this before.
She's a ringer.
Oh, yeah, I've done it for Fairfax. I've done it for Rox Middle. I've done it for that. I love it. It's just, it's so much fun. And wear very light clothing because it's incredibly hot under the lights on stage. Though now we've got LED fixtures, it might not be so hot. We'll see.
Test it out.
What time is that? On the 18th, what time? 6:00?
Yeah, 6 o'clock for the teams to line up.
Yep. Malia, coordinate a practice for you guys.
Yes. The practice usually involves wine and food at my house.
Okay, so there's two components to it. There's the people that actually sit underneath the hot LED lights or the warm LED lights or the cool LED lights. And then there is a donation that gets made along with that.
So, you prefer the donation?
Better than embarrassing myself.
I've got my checkbook with me. I'll make my donation.
If you don't spell, you have to write a larger check.
This is an organization that does great work, so, whether it's the Spelling Bee or not, I want to support it. Can you coordinate the donation piece?
I can.
You coordinate who's going to spell?
Sure. Good.
We have a team? Does this, does this work?
Yes.
Excellent.
Hey, you did this last year. You did a good job. That's good.
And I do have one other committee report.
Okay.
And that is, I just wanted to mention that the Heights Coalition for Public Education held its final of the three panel discussions last week, and it was strategies, you know, that included some of our Ohio state-level folks. We had Janine Boyd, our, and Kent Smith, both our representatives. We had a state school board member, and we are blessed to be represented by Merle Johnson. And then we had the AFT Legislative Director, Donald Johnson. And it was a really wonderful event that took place at the beautiful Heights High School. We learned quite a bit from these people about how to advocate more effectively. And I just say, you know, bravo to the Heights Coalition for Public Education. Great group. Again, another great group working on behalf of public education here in the Heights. So, that's it.
Any other things?
Policy Committee is meeting on Tuesday.
Next week?
Paul is sitting here in the audience. So, yes, we're cranking along.
And then we have the communities and schools. That one is this week, next week, I'm sorry.
That's...
That meeting.
That's next week, the 14th, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other announcements?
You have in your...
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. That was a joyous surprise.
And I think this is their third production from Oxford, the Disney production. I think this is their third year, yeah. So, please put that on your schedule to attend. I think that'd be fun.
And that's the, let's see, Thursday, the 22nd, Friday, the 23rd, and Saturday, the 24th of March.
Now, so Thursday morning, we have the Family Connections Breakfast fundraiser. So, I'll attend that on behalf of the district. We have a short video, so they're going to have Cleveland Heights in this video that they're going to show at the breakfast. Yeah, they've been doing, another great partner.
And the High School Talent Show's coming up, isn't it?
It is.
March 23rd, Friday, the 23rd, for all the kids who do something other besides the musical.
Oh, okay.
There's a lot going on, yeah.
Anybody have anything else to share?
Yeah. And I don't know if any of you guys are attending the Faces of Fair Housing. They're doing, are reading that, it's a community book on Evicted.
Oh, I've heard about that.
So, that is this Wednesday, Thursday, at 6:30 at the Leroy Library. It's a discussion on that book. So, I've been reading it.
It's a great book, isn't it?
Some others and ed services have been reading it. It's a great book. Yeah, eye-opening. So, if you want to, that's Thursday at the Leroy Library.
But it conflicts with the BAC meeting.
Oh, BAC. Yeah, and then I decided I better, if you guys don't need me at BAC, I go to the book instead. Scott and George said they want to represent me at the BAC.
There we go.
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay, let's close the meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I second.
Call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.